Okay, it's September fourteenth, twenty twenty, ten o'clock. They're gonna call this meeting for pro-call. Pamela here. Shelly.
Here.
Murphy here. For discussion, possible action regarding Air Medicare Network Annual Membership.
Okay, so this year they went up to, they were fifty-five last year, they're sixty-five per person this year.
And that covers their family and all that?
Yeah, the whole household.
Any discussion on that? I think it's just part of good business.
I move we do so.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks.
Right there?
Yep, my hand.
Number five, discussion and possible action to approve payments for the Rural Water District, number three, breach contract nineteen twenty-four for one thousand four dollars and thirteen cents.
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just one place here, Shelly?
Yes.
Okay, number six, approval of warrants and claims. And a motion we approve them?
Yep.
Set, I'll second. Okay, whatever.
And now carries.
All in favor? Aye.
Get Randy for that? Okay.
Yeah, he needs to get in there a little bit.
Okay. Number seven, approval of the minutes on the last meeting on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. Any additions or corrections, discussion, whatever? It all looked good to me.
I don't have any, I move we approve those. Looked good to me.
That's a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Number eight, approved disproved monthly reports for the following, county clerk, court department, health department, treasurer, election board, and the sheriff. How many of them got it?
I think I've got them all. I'm gonna make sure.
I'll make that motion, if that, that's like the first time.
Quite a while. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I believe so. I mean, that's gonna be a good weekend.
We need a good weekend.
Servant put together.
The missed one?
That one right there.
Oh, that's the one that's in it?
It's a reference.
Yeah, that's where we want it.
If there's a point?
Yeah, I know it's pointing.
Okay.
Where did it come from? Over there? It didn't go there?
Yeah, I was gonna grab a box then.
Do we just need one single, or disrupt page?
Sorry. I meant to.
There's two, two pages in there. About this, up here it is.
Two places to miss, John.
It's on the second page. I think there's, I'll count one, but if there's, using the sheriff's report, there's in there two pages.
Yeah, I bet there's two reports, okay, she's stuck together. Yeah.
That there, Shelly? Does that mean anything?
I think she found like that.
Got a letter from the VA, so?
Yeah, she got, yeah.
Number nine, discussion and possible action regarding monthly appropriations.
Is this one on?
Uh, I guess, uh, second page.
Do you have a motion we approve these?
I have a motion we approve, what we have?
Monthly appropriations on number nine. Need a second?
Two, two on there? Just these two?
Uh-huh.
Second page?
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Shelly down again?
Yes.
Still lower and lower and lower?
Yeah, essentially down to about seventy-five thousand on our. But, the CBRI is a... Unbeknownst to me, why?
I don't figure that out.
Are they a different funding mechanism? Well, I can't, I forget whether that's a license plate deal or, or something, but it's that, you know, it's always separate.
None.
But it's up to sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-two bucks.
A piece?
Yes.
I think that is, well, I mean, that kind of makes up for the MNO loss, I guess.
Have they got much equipment room down there, John?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's stuff going on over, pans, tractor pans, four-wheel drive with tracks on them. Got a big old mow tractor with the tracks on the back of it. Really, about flotation, about a three, four, maybe not, about a two hundred and eighty horsepower size tractor, got big tracks on the back, big fat tires on the front.
That they're doing what with?
Brush hauls.
Of all?
It's like a flotation type for boggy ground.
What kind of boards they got on them?
Um... Brush hauls, I think, aren't they red?
Fifteen foot, red, brush hauls?
Rhinos or?
Rhinos.
Brush hauls are both red, I think.
Yeah, they look red like an international red kind of color.
I'm not sure what breed or that color, but I think bulldog and rhinos are both that color, and there could be more.
Cat dozers, John Deere graders and cat graders, though.
Is it?
Lot of rental looking stuff, all kinds of backhoes and stuff running around.
Cat rental. Is land or, do they do that, or, or do they sub that out?
Depends on what you're talking about.
I mean, the dirt work.
Well, I don't, I think they do all that.
Okay, I, I wasn't sure what, I knew they had, were like the general contractor, but I didn't know what their actual role was in a wind farm.
I think they, they probably subbed some of that out, because, um... There was a guy just sitting away on a grader, and he wasn't a blacker guy.
Okay.
They, uh, like Byron, they'll give him certain things?
Yeah.
I think, I'm really not sure, but there's a lot of stuff going on out there. In between.
Are they hauling rocks right now?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I bet they've hauled three, four hundred loads already and haven't even put any on roads or... They're trying to get their lay-down yard.
Right.
Where they could set their offices up, and, and a mile south of She lights. Or well, it's a mile east of She lights on four seventy is their lay-down yard on Allen Blacktop, and then a mile south of that is their concrete plant.
Okay, number ten, discussion, possible action regarding the transfer of appropriations from Highway District One and District Two, Servic account to Highway District One and District Two, personal services in amount of twenty thousand ninety-five eighty-eight each. And that's a, that's the served money that they, the thirty-five percent that the legislature gave us for our MNO accounts. And this transfer I'm making is going to my personal services, because I don't need any other money if I don't have my help, so.
I wanted to say one on that.
And I want the minutes to reflect that.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion we accept that.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
I think you want us two to sign up here, and then all three down here.
Got it.
We might just slide the trash can away, so much, we might just slide the fire to the wall. So what we could do is we had to survive.
We got lots of paper, we could survive.
I just signed it there?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, number eleven, discussion, possible action regarding the C D eight engineering selection letter for District One, job project three one seven seven six.
I move we approve that, that's up on Greenleaf, with Greenleaf Bridge. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number twelve, discussion, possible action regarding the title sheet for District Three, where the bridge over Saint Creek.
So moved. Second?
All in favor? Aye.
What was this one at, John?
Saint Creek, I think.
Well, the number twelve, for the bridge over Saint Creek?
Yeah.
And where would that be at?
I don't know, I mean, there's, I got three or four bridges there.
Oh, one too.
Whether it's the one on four fifty, I don't know.
I'll show you on that title sheet.
I was discussing one on five hundred, too, he's gone. That's the Saint Creek one on four fifty. Is the one we're talking about. But I'm, I'm gonna have him fix the one on five hundred, too, but that's not, we're just starting the environmental, whatever you wanna call it, on that.
Okay, number thirteen, discussion, possible action regarding the resolution to execute an agreement for bridge and approaches on east-west three over unnamed creek, eighteen point nine miles north and one point eight miles east of Bayard, CN twenty-one project J three seventeen seventy-eight zero zero four CI, state job piece number thirty-one seven seven eight oh four between ODOT and the county.
And this is yours?
Yes, and that needs to be, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I make the motion we accept that?
This, this would be the, okay, do I have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. This would be the one over east of Snare's yet, right?
Whether it be one point?
Yes.
Yes, be of east of three seventy there.
Almost two miles. Is that right across the road from the Green Valley Church, or the?
No, that'd be on, you know, Winchester Bridges, be on around that curve, that first little bridge down.
On east of it. He's got two that happen up there.
Winchester Bridge? Yeah.
Oh, okay. Around that curve, like you're going to, go to south towards, uh?
Butches? Yeah.
Why don't you name that creek David's Creek?
I want to, I want to name it Fuden Creek, that all used to go on.
Trouble Creek, Anna, troubled waters.
Yeah.
Pat Phil and Coy.
Yeah.
Okay, number fourteen, discussion, possible action regarding the ODOT project maintenance, financing, and our right-of-way for bridge and approaches on east-west three over unnamed creek, eighteen point nine miles north and one point eight miles east of Bayard, CN twenty-one project number J three seventeen seventy-eight double zero four CI, state job piece number thirty-one seven seven eight oh four, oh five, oh six, and oh seven. Well, it's the same location, I don't, evidently the same bridge, so. Yeah.
You want, we accept that?
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Are they rebuilding that bridge, or?
Yeah. It's one of them WPA bridges.
Too narrow.
Well, yeah, their other maps are not clean, right?
Strong and narrow.
Yeah. I would think that the engineer or something did widen that out.
Sure be cheaper, but I don't think they look at things like that.
Number fifteen, review, discussion, and possible action regarding the Woods County Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one budget.
So our budget ended up being thirteen million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and forty-two cents, which is down about two hundred and sixty-eight thousand from last year.
Okay.
The year before that, we were up to almost that same, so we're kind of evening out over the last year. But, um, everything looked good, I'm good with all the numbers, and it looks like you got everything in the right spots. So, I've got two pages on each one, and then I'll have this one to be signed also.
Okay, do you guys, have you, you wanna look at it, or do you wanna?
Here's a picture.
Are they both the same?
Yes, I gave him one.
Okay.
It's just, it's not bound, is it? It's the same thing.
Aye.
Would you say we carry over, was you, about the same, right? It is down.
Yeah, we're down about two hundred and sixty thousand this year, and last year we were up two hundred and forty, so.
Is that just sales tax difference?
No. In other words, expenses have stayed about the same. It's just a decrease in income is what it amounts to.
Yes.
Because I think we, we kept the budget pretty flat.
Yes.
Is, is what it will down to. I haven't had a chance to see, I know the city said there's those taxes up, so.
Yeah, it was.
I've got to believe ours is, I haven't seen the.
Think they were pretty surprised.
The figures.
It was up.
For the counties, but normally when the cities are up.
But, like you said, too, you know, there's a lot of people doing stuff, like lumberyard and gotta buy groceries.
Well, all the restaurants are open.
Yeah.
That I'm aware of, for in-person dining and all that, so, that.
Did Johnny open back up for evening shows?
I think he did, maybe, yeah, I think I saw that.
Just, just one of them.
Yeah. And he probably has, where they have the space for seating and stuff. I call it that, you know.
You know, Clay and Tasha was chatting the other night at the drive-in, this, you couldn't believe how many out, out people were out.
Don't you know, drive-ins would really, I wish we had one, because it would really be popular.
She said, Tasha said, they're probably ten, fifteen car full out.
How bad?
There's a group of people just got together, went to order it, ate, and went on out there.
Any questions, John?
No. I move we approve that, then.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Shelly, you just need my signature here.
Um, I'll, okay, so you're gonna sign right there?
That's the budget board.
Well, cross that out, we cross that part out.
Oh.
Yeah, cross it out, too.
Oh, okay, the chairman, all three of us sign?
Right, all three of us sign, and there's two pages for... Oh, and then I gotta have to sign the logistics.
Okay. That budget board deal has to be thrown.
I know, I don't know why, I, well, I know why.
Who's this with?
I can have it, that's what I'm gonna fix the page.
Okay, all of us.
All of us sign. Two pages.
Oh, I gotta sign that second, too, you know, I'm sorry. Freeing up.
We ready?
Yep.
Okay, number sixteen, discussion, possible action regarding the division order from Redline Energy LLC. Redline has.
Would that be something?
I don't know, that division order is for a well they put for induction. Is that in District One or Three? I don't know of any Redline wells in District Two.
This one is in three twenty-four sixteen.
That'll be over here.
I bet you.
That'd be up there south of Park.
That's what I wondered, I, that name is unfamiliar with me.
They just started that, I move we approve that.
I think one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I can read, you know that album code number?
No, I guess not.
He's a common, I don't know, he, I think he works for Kevin, Kevin.
She said for you guys to sign it, witnesses.
You said that.
Yeah.
As witnesses.
Yeah.
Yeah, just sign as witnesses.
There's a few lines there beside it, so it's really not three places.
Okay.
Okay, number seventeen, discussion, possible action regarding the application for the Emergency Management Performance Grant for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Ethan, you're up, I guess.
Yeah, it's pretty much the same as it's been in years past, it's twenty thousand dollars with quarterly reimbursement on it.
Exactly.
All departments pretty much head's name, so it goes from October first of twenty twenty to September period of twenty twenty-one. Is that that year?
I'll move we accept that?
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Ain't got no code and extra silliness?
No.
Just, just the one spot on the front?
Yeah.
How am I allowed to swear, saying this? He's going back.
That's gonna really confuse me now.
Has legs, where? Not hard to do, but.
I guess you keep that, this panel, or does Ethan?
I can take it back, too.
Okay, and I, go ahead.
Okay, number eighteen, discussion, possible action regarding the Swift nine-one-one annual subscription in the amount of six thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars, Grant County, or Pagewood County, two thousand one hundred and sixty-five for their subscription. This is what we did. This is what we did when we started this and did it go up or is it?
No, it stayed the same price it has in the past. And I just go in and pay for it out of my budget and then period county has reimbursed us for their portion.
I'll move we accept that?
I'll second. On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, I was just. Oh, it's all about this SWIFT deal. So, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, number 19. Discussion and possible action regarding the memorandum of understanding between Woods County Emergency Management and Grant County Emergency Management. And that is pertaining to the SWIFT agreement we've just, just approved and.
Do we need to accept that then?
Yes.
I'll move we do so?
All second and on favor?
Aye.
Okay, number 20. Discussion and possible action regarding the 2021 regular scheduled commissioner meeting.
Pretty normal. There's only one time this year, it'll be on the Tuesday.
Okay, July, the sixth, this, I take it, the sixth is a Tuesday. Okay, all of them are. Our Monday meetings, it looks like.
It'd be six or three that day.
July sixth?
Yeah, that's my birthday.
Really?
Well, we'll have a, a Monday meeting just for you. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
I might not be there.
Did we vote for you have a birthday? Is that what we put it on?
Yeah.
That'll be your big meeting.
That's a long ways off. That better. Yeah, unless it's real important, it's pretty early to start planning. Okay, number 21. Discussion and possible action regarding the 2021 holiday schedule.
So same as the state except.
Good Friday.
Friday, I get a Friday and then Columbus Day.
Okay. They haven't changed that Columbus Day?
No, they added one, didn't they?
I didn't add it, cause I didn't know if you guys would do it. What was it called, June, June?
Something, I don't remember what they called it.
But they didn't add.
Columbus Day.
But they didn't add it, the state didn't add it.
It's Native American Day or something like that or.
Yeah.
Something indigenous.
Indigenous People Day or something, I think. But, I mean, I'm good with this. If you guys want to look, I mean, here's the state holidays. Well, the only thing we're taking is Good Friday and Columbus Day that the state's not, so. Anyway, I'll make the motion we approve.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Do you want to stamp this for all three of us to sign or?
Um, oh, well, usually just one.
Oh, okay. Okay, 22. Discussion and possible action regarding the election board request to surplus adjourn an H P laptop I D number S L two five oh dash oh five.
I'll move we do so?
They threw it away.
Oh, and it, it's already thrown away?
Yeah.
So that needs to be noted in advance? You've done.
Yeah.
A motion and second or?
I'll second.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Man, there's a bunch of signings.
I know.
Wow. Well, I hid some boxes from you down here.
I know, I've seen them down there. Okay, number 23. Discussion and possible action regarding the June scenario temporary easement gravel.
That's my gravel pit. I'll move we do so.
Where's that at, David?
Right there, he's talking about by that bridge. Yeah, right there to the north. Right north around that curve.
I'll second that. On favor?
Aye.
Number 24. Discussion and possible action regarding the use of courthouse lawn for a town-wide garage set. What day is it? Happened today's day.
People bring all their, their junk down here and sell it, is that what? How much of that's gonna get left if you don't sell it?
Uh, date of event, ten seventeen twenty twenty.
Put claws in there. Who's run to that?
Megan's.
Megan Lear is the contact person.
I don't care as long as you make it.
Stand up with a bunch of stuff.
Right.
I signed both of these.
Oh, is there two more? Oh, just that one.
Just the one?
Just that one there, yeah.
This one?
No. Yeah. Thank you.
Well, it, it's, here's, it says in signing below it. Yeah. I, I assume risk of harm or injury which may occur to the participant as a result of.
You thought you had black people, I had checks.
But I hear by release Woods County and their officers, I suppose, or you know, I will cause damage to her from this individual. We're gonna have no restrooms, but. I wonder, would it be out of line? She filled this out and we didn't have anything in there. I mean, I'm, I'm right with John on this deal about the cleanup.
I agree.
I need to have a little clause that she'll be responsible or somebody will be. How do we handle that? Cause it's not on the agenda to do. Well, here, it's ten seventeen. It's ten seventeen, well. It's happening ten seventeen. Or maybe we just need to table this until the next and.
That'd be good.
And then we'll have it like it should be that way, yeah. And get some answers from her and she'll let her know where we stand. Yeah, she's got a contact number and, I mean, it just needs to be in writing and understood that it needs to be cleaned up and left as it was when she came.
Okay, so you made that motion to table it?
Yeah, I made motion to table it.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. Okay, very good.
Because it doesn't say in that agreement, but we probably could add it to all agreements.
I agree.
Number 25. Discussion and possible action to approve payments for the Real Water District number three grant number nineteen twenty-four for five thousand dollars, one hundred twenty-two and forty-eight cents.
Well, we getting pretty close to finishing this up.
Yeah.
And it just has your signature.
Okay. How much do they lie? Are they getting?
They're getting real close. I mean, they, they, this may actually do it. If not, they're within a thousand dollars, I'm pretty sure.
I guess we, I'll make the motion we approve it. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Need new business.
Windmills are going.
And you're having a big event at Winoka this weekend?
Do buggy takeover or A T, U two B takeover, I think, what they're calling it?
And, and I think till, till the end of the month, still have the opportunity for those that haven't filled out the census. I mean.
They can give you a card, you had three different times.
Is that online or is that mail?
It's easy to do too.
It, it's, I think online deal, I don't know if, they didn't mail, yes, they did mail out.
Yes, they did.
Some things, but a lot of rural, it was, it was my understanding there early, John, that a lot of rural Oklahoma didn't get the.
That's what I'm saying, because I don't recall getting a deal in the mail.
I think I got one answer.
And if I did, I threw it away.
We, we got it, and Paul filled ours out online. We got the notice, but.
Yeah, we did.
But I'm pretty sure Harper and Beaver County that there was, I heard on one-on-one that they had issues with getting theirs and those counties to the, to the rural areas, the mail. Anyway, is that, anybody else got anything?
No, I don't. I've been digging on it, even more lately than you. Have you?
All right, number twenty seven. Approved, disapproved blanket purchase order.
I'll move we approve those some again.
Yeah, I'll second. On favor?
Aye.
Number twenty eight. Motion to adjourn.
Let me get it in right there.
I'll move we.
I will second.